Quick, call them if you need to order a roll call, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Here.
Kaledonia.
Here.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Yes.
North Danville. Nunde.
Here.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
I'd like to ask your supervisor, Jerry Dymond, to give us a bunch of reasons. What are the reasons?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do have two sets of meeting minutes for your consideration this afternoon. The first being from October twenty-second, our last regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections anyone cares to bring forward? Jerry Dymond, look for a motion in a second, please.
Move, Schuster.
Is that on the second set? Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? None, they're carried in the second is, we had a special meeting the twelfth of November. Is everyone okay with the content of those? If they are, they look for a motion in the second. Motion, or?
Second, Paul.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, we do have two public hearings this afternoon. First, I would ask Megan Crowe to please come up and introduce the first.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman. As you may be aware, effective September seventeenth, two thousand and four, the New York State Ag and Markets Law was amended section three oh three B, which allowed for parcels to be included into the agricultural districts on an annual basis. The Livingston County Board of Supervisors designated that September would be that thirty-day annual period for petitions from landowners looking to join the ag districts. Three petitions for inclusion of predominantly viable agricultural land within a certified district were filed within the Livingston County Board of Supervisors this year. Pursuant to the New York State Ag and Markets Law, the county's Agriculture and Farmland Protection Board conducted a review of the petitions at their October sixteenth meeting and determined that the parcels for inclusion in the agricultural districts were viable agricultural land and it would serve the public interest. There's approximately forty-one point zero eight acres located in Avon, Canisius, Mount Morris, and Sparta towns. Today's public hearing is to allow for comments and the consideration of these parcels to be modifying Livingston County agricultural districts number two and three and to comment on the recommendation from the Ag and Farmland Protection Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. I'm going to ask Ian Coyle next to come up and discuss our proposed twenty twenty-six spending plan and the budget, and then I'll open both hearings in a bit.
All right, thank you. Good to see a lot of familiar faces. I might be a little bit longer than Megan, so bear with me. I've already been told I might get one of these during this, so. But happy to present to you all the county's twenty twenty-six tentative budget. As you know, there was some administrative changeover in the last year, and I was glad to come back and assist the county with different efforts, and one of those was the county budget, so that's why I'm up here explaining the budgets in middle, kind of what it looks like, what's in it, what's not in it, and kind of the impact areas for the following year. So if you've seen presentations that I've made on the budget, it will not look, it'll look very familiar, put it that way. So, in fact, there's not a lot of major changes in Livingston County from a budgetary perspective, but there's a lot of different things that are changing, you know, headwinds and challenges and, you know, intergovernmental stuff that affects the county itself as a government. So I think there's some important notes to make as far as what went into this budget. So here's what I'm going to cover. Just some pictures to talk about things. Actually, here's why I did that, because the budget funds a lot of different programs and services in the county. It funds grants, it funds projects, it funds people, it funds initiatives, and some don't necessarily always have a particular budget line or something I'm going to be able to highlight. But I will tell you that the strategic plan of the county and the individual department action plans and what, you know, what the Sheriff's Office wants to do, what DSS wants to do, what purchasing wants to do is sometimes not reflective in the stuff I'm going to mention. So I think whenever I can, I'll mention the fact that, you know, this is a large budget, two hundred and nineteen million dollars this year, two hundred and fifteen million dollars, and it funds a lot of programs and a lot of services and a lot of people. So, okay, so year review. I will not be going through these really in depth, but suffice to say that when you prepare a budget, you're really in a three-year cycle. You're looking at the previous year and how things went, so in our case it's twenty-four. You're looking at the current year and how things are going, twenty-five, and you're looking at the forecast for two thousand twenty-six. So we really start with how did the previous year go? I always call it rollover money, that's a non-technical term. I was going through the capital improvement plan today. We look at rollover money, unused dollars, can we reappropriate things for projects and remove them off of the budget? That's why you're always doing the look back. But it's also important to note that the county, you know, has a clean audit, it's a good audit opinion, we get audited every year by an external auditor, you know, everything's on the up and up, we're doing things well, we don't have any level of fiscal stress according to the state comptroller. Our bond rating has been sustained. It's a very good bond rating, probably the best bond credit rating you can get for a county of our size. The only thing we're limited on is the fact that our assessed, our taxable value is fairly limited versus more affluent counties, and that's really the only reason why we're not triple A. Otherwise, we would be triple A bond rated. We did have some issues associated with the shutdown, I think everybody has, and more so not so with the shutdown long-term, but really what's going on with the federal government as it relates to the state government. We've got some major impact areas to consider, and probably the worst is going to come in twenty twenty-seven and not twenty twenty-six. So you'll hear me say that a couple of different times. Sales tax is the county's largest individual revenue center. We could always kind of bank on about three percent increase a year. We're down, depending on the quarterly draws, we're down or static a little bit for this year, so that is something to, you know, really aggressively monitor, as I say during this. Nursing home is something that is an individual department, individual fund, is segregated and separated, it's an enterprise fund, it's almost a forty million dollar operation in and of itself, so I'm going to have a separate conversation on that here in a minute and talk to you a little about how we move forward. So the projects that are funded in the strategic plan, I'm not going to go through these, but, you know, have some good relevance to the budget. So sometimes they're actually budgeted projects, sometimes they're budgeted with a capital improvement allocation, sometimes they're budgeted with staff, but it's more than, my point is, and I mentioned this when I started, it's more than just numbers, it's like programs, it's people, it's services, it's helping people out, it's assisting folks in their time of need, I mean, that's what county government does, that's what public service is about. So what are some drivers or some things that are affecting the twenty twenty-six budget? So, I'll get to this, but the budget's going up, and taxes are going up slightly, and the tax levy is going up slightly. Medicaid alone is, used to be about thirty or thirty-three percent, it's stabilized because the state has capped that program, but that in and of itself is a single nine and a half million dollar budget line that if you were a county in forty-five other states, you would not have that fiscal obligation. Another way, another way of saying it is, what would the county do with nine and a half million dollars if we didn't have to fund our Medicaid portion? Because other states fund that themselves. Here, your county taxpayers are asked to foot a significant portion of that bill. So that's a big deal for us. Also, there was a series of federal-state actions that are going to cause our social services budget to be impacted greatly, probably cumulatively to the tune of over a million some dollars. There's a couple of programs mentioned there. One that we're monitoring is the administration component of SNAP and some others where we have a not full year impact in twenty-six, we're going to have a full year impact in twenty-seven. Also, we employ a lot of people, full and part-time, you know, eleven hundred, they have salaries, they have benefits, we want to be competitive, we want to be a place that people want to work for, so that costs money. And this board, the last couple of years, has made strategic investments in salary adjustments, benefit enhancements, things of that nature, so once they're in, they have to be sustained. And so when they're in, they cost dollars, and then when they have to be sustained, there's some inflationary expenses as a result of that. New York State retirement system, we have the pension, so we have to see those increases sometimes. They're not always a level of increase annually, this year they were, and it was fairly sizable, and that is about a eleven million dollar account, so when it goes up ten percent, you can do the math, that's a big deal for the county budget. You know, we have large departments, so those departments have large expenses, when, even if they go up on an inflation basis, even if they go up three, five, six, seven percent, depending on what they have to buy and who they have to employ. So department expenses, we've got some new positions in the last couple of years, we're trying to then sustain those new positions. The county's not adding positions and droves all over the place, but when we have added positions, we of course have to sustain them in the budget, and this budget doesn't cut any of those positions that we have presently in the budget. Unlike our friends at the federal government, and sometimes some would argue in the state government, the county government in New York by law has to present a balanced budget. So this is a balanced budget. If I was a spinmeister, I would say that this budget is demonstrably lower than last year, and I would say we cut the county budget. That is true, but we have some one-time grants and one-time capital projects that flowed through the county budget last year at a higher number than are flowing through the county budget this year, and it's a little bit of a lower number. So, well, it looks like it went down a little bit, most everything else frankly is going up, although some things are flat. So also, you have to look at the rate and the levy. If your, if your taxes are going up, actually, everybody's taxes pretty much are going up, but the levy is a total amount of dollars that we're collecting, that's going up around four and a half percent. The tax rate itself is going up about three point seven percent. The tax levy in New York State is about a true two percent. For Livingston County, that represents about six hundred and fifty, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year by law that New York State says that we can go up unless we do a supermajority override of this Board of Supervisors. So when you take into account a two hundred and fifty million dollar budget and a thirty-four million dollar tax levy, asking everything to be done with all of those things that are outside of our control going up with just another six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's why the tax cap is a little bit of a, you know, it's, it's, well, I'll reserve comment on that. So the tax rate, seven dollars nineteen per thousand, so every, every per thousand dollars of value that you have in your home, you're going to pay seven dollars and nineteen cents, so the increase in collective taxes. The rate, we are, if you look at, you know, the multi-year mean, which I'm going to go through in just a second, we're lower than we were. Now, that doesn't mean taxes are lower, but, you know, if you've had relatively static assessed valuation, or even year-to-year if you're flat, we've had the rate go down a little bit, we've had the rate go up a little bit, and I'll go through what that multi-year stretch looks like. The average single-family home, two hundred some thousand dollars in assessed value is going to have an impact of about fifty some dollars. It does have some, I call them aggressive, and I don't want to, you know, worry anybody, but, you know, we're forecasting that we will have a return in sales tax that's on the normal trajectory. So when I say revenue estimates were made that way, that's the way they were made. However, we still have some conservative practices built in there, we have a contingency, we have transfers to our reserves, we have a capital program, unlike a lot of counties, that we're able to fund with cash, so we don't have to do any additional debt service. I mentioned that tax rate over time, you can see in two thousand thirteen, we were here, you can see we were lower than we were in two thousand thirteen. Again, that's just the rate. There's a lot of people that focus on the rate, I'm not one of them, because the rate doesn't, is one factor. The value of your home times your rate is what you're really going to pay in taxes. But if you've had relatively, you know, static assessed values, you know, if the rate is going down a little bit, that's a good thing. Conversely, you know, the county has had to rely a little bit more on the amount of tax dollars that we're collecting at the local level to support the overall budget and the overall budget's growth the last couple of years. So as you can see this, for the rate of inflation as it is, in two thousand thirteen dollars, twenty-five million, this would be right around thirty-three, thirty-four million dollars. So at the rate of inflation of what two thousand thirteen dollars are to two thousand twenty-five, let alone twenty-six, we're basically at that inflationary trend, if you look at it. It doesn't, I'm not saying that's good or bad, but that's basically what it's been. The budget backdrop, sales tax is a big piece of our puzzle, as I said, eight percent every time you go buy something that necessitates sales tax, we get about forty million dollars. You might not be able to see it, but what's happening is, you know, on the quarterly draws, you know, we're pretty flat, then we were down a little bit, and then we were kind of just up slightly but down from two years ago. It looks really bad in the fourth quarter because we're really not fully materialized yet, so I probably should, you know, kept that out of here. We're also going to get lodging taxes that we weren't getting before, we've only gotten like a real small portion of those, so every time there's an Airbnb-type transaction, they're going to pay three percent for lodging tax that goes to tourism, they're now under state law going to pay eight percent for that, that stay, and that's going to go into a sales tax bucket that goes with all the other sales tax proceeds that we get. We think that's going to be four, five, six hundred thousand dollars maybe in new, net new annual revenues to the county, so I think we should be okay there. Not going to get into the weeds on this, but essentially what this is, is the whole budget all rolled up into, into one. We have almost five billion dollars of assessed taxable value that's out there in the county, so that, all those values, commercial, vacant land, ag, the everyday homeowner, they get assessed, you know, a value, then they get charged against that or rate, and that produces a tax bill. That tax bill, on average, for a single-family home, is about fourteen hundred and fifty dollars for Livingston County, right, for just the county portion. So I always say, control what you can control, don't worry about the stuff that you can't control, and I think what we as, or you as a county can control, I think you do very well from an efficiency and a kind of a cost-effective bang-for-the-buck perspective. I can say that lady on the right did make that shot, so it did go in, I saw it. So if you, nursing home, I think, is worth talking about individually, I don't talk about the other funds individually, and it's nothing against the other funds, but there's, there's been a lot going on with this particular fund, and also the support that it requires from Livingston County proper, from like the general fund. So this year, it, the CNR as a fund needed three and a half million dollars plus a federal government match of about five and a half or so from the general fund. We're going to get that from the Fed, so that's great, so we're getting ten and a half million dollars from the federal government to help support the nursing home. It's well and highly occupied, which is great, you want to see a home that's robust and active and people want to go to, that's still the case. We have a bunch of strategies for next year that have been placed into the budget, so I guess you could say maybe less conservative than in years past, so we're very much wanting to do some improvements for certain areas of the census, contain costs in certain areas, enhance revenues in other areas. That all leads to twenty twenty-six, to this number kind of over here, this was about three and a half million dollars last year, and this number is about a million and a half this year. So, I know I was kind of getting a little bit, but that's a good thing. So we've reduced the on-paper non-IGT local share from three point three to like one point four. Proof will be in the pudding, a budget's wrong the day you pass it. Okay? Because everything with the exactitude of what you wanted to come in at never comes in with that level of specificity. So it's going to be in the hard work every day, you know, every month to make sure that that is kept there at that moment. Same thing applies for the whole entire county government. Some other things that we dealt with, we're self-insured for medical, we've got six hundred people that rely on the county for health insurance plus family members, so it's probably twelve hundred people. That went up initially twenty percent, we were able to offset that with our insurance fund reserves partially, so that still was pretty sizable, it's ten percent, and that hurts the county budget, and frankly, it hurts people that are payers of healthcare because they're contributors to the healthcare, and that hurts really everybody. So not, not something right home about, but something we had to deal with in the budget. I mentioned the compensation stuff. Just some minor things, our fund balance position is still strong, which is, you know, allows us to have good investment earnings, allows us to, you know, we're going to fund a roof project here at this facility with cash, otherwise we'd have to bond that out. When we have a federal government program that needs five million dollars every single year to match, we have the availability to do that with cash, other places don't, so they leave money on the table, so that's why you have the fund balance, that's why it exists, that's why maintaining a, and it's one of those things where somebody's going to tell you you have too much or not enough. Nobody's ever going to tell you you have just right amount of fund balance. So there's no real prescription for that, we do have a fund balance policy, we do adhere to it, and we follow it. So I mentioned retirement, finishing up here in a minute. Average single-family tax bill, fourteen fifty-two. As I said, the state tax cap only allows us to go up on this budget's tax levy of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What, what I'm saying in the presentation of the budget is, we need to go up more than that, so that's why you considered the override. The mandated increases, if we only had the stuff that we were in control of, we would present a budget frankly that had less in taxes, lower the tax rate, and we would certainly be compliant with the tax cap. But those mandated things that are outside of our control, particularly with social services, pension program, things like that, make it such that we have to do the override. You look at the average tax levies out there, they're thirty-seven million, we're less than that. If you look at the per-thousand tax levies out there for our comparables, five eighty-five, we're lower than that. So if you look at our like peers, I think we are doing, you know, well as far as where we need to be financially. So in closing, what I would be looking at, and I would probably keep something like this front and center for the future, as far as where things go financially for Livingston County, a lot rides on the sales tax performance, so I would be recommending to monitor that on a regular basis. We have to be mindful that cost shifts from the federal and state government have already happened, they're going to happen probably, you know, more, and they're going to be worse. So those downward challenges on the hierarchy, you know, counties downhill from the feds and the states, so you know what happens. So we have to maybe push for some flexibility with our legislative agenda, we got to focus on what we can control, focus on our strategic plan, if there's any organizational changes that you haven't considered to implement that drive some efficiencies or something like that, I would recommend them. And to finish up, your next steps are, there's a public hearing today, two opportunities for public comment, the budget can be considered for passage anytime after that, and then you have other things like the capital improvement plan, any additional reserve allocations, and the department head's salary schedule for future dates. And thank you for everybody for the help on this, especially, you know, Ashley, Lindsay, I'm going to miss somebody if I start rattling somebody off, I should know better than this, but, you know, Shannon, Megan, Morris, the MASA fellowship recipient helped out with some of the data on here. So thank you all for your participation. Of course, department heads, you know, the administrator is a budget officer, but that's kind of high-level, big-picture strategy, things like that, I mean, the real work happens at the operational level, and if you didn't have department heads that, you know, weren't controlling their budget, weren't, you know, knowing that, you know, it's not a use-it-or-lose-it philosophy in this county, it's, you would have bigger problems, and you don't have that because of those, those people. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ian. Declare both public hearings open at this time. I'll ask anyone in the public wishing to comment on either public hearing to please come forward to the podium, sign in, and, you know, address, address the Board of Supervisors. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on either hearing? We'll be leaving the hearings open until the end of the meeting. Any member of the Board of Supervisors wishing to speak on either? Mr. Conde O'Gorman?
Thank you, Chairman. Ian, for the sales tax, given the lack of, are you back like a couple years ago for the sales tax that you put in there for a placeholder or no?
So public hearing only, it's not a question-answer session?
Don't forget, we're paying you.
Chairman, do you want me to answer that question?
Yes.
No, we're basically back to, so if we, if you look at it annual basis, we're going to meet what last year's mark was. From a budgetary basis, next year, we need growth for the current year trend, we need to, you know, get back to where we were before, and then up a little bit, but it's, and that ends up being about a two percent. Okay.
Good, no, thanks.
Thank you. Any other member of the Board of Supervisors wishing to have one at this time? Okay, we'll move around through the agenda, and we lose two public hearings. Communications, please, Michelle.
Receipt of noted petition from the villages of Danville and Livonia requesting the county treasurer collect delinquent village taxes for the year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. The proposed two thousand twenty-six Livingston County budget was filed on November first, two thousand twenty-four. Receipt of notice of claim in the matter of Justin Cogswell versus Livingston County et al. Receipt of National Grid Notice of Impending Settlement Negotiations, case twenty-five T zero-two-three-five. Receipt of Town of Naples Public Hearing Notice. Receipt of application of New York State Electric and Gas Corporation for a Certificate of Environmental Compatibility in Public Mean pursuant to Article Seven of the Public Service Law for the Livingston County Transmission Enhancement Project.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we're considering abstract claims.
Mr. Wadsworth, approving Abstract of Claims, eleven A, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth. Are there any questions or concerns on this Abstract of Claims? During none, roll please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Kaledonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted.
Next, we have several resolutions, and we'll put through the agenda.
Appointing member to the Chemical Dependency Subcommittee, Tara Wilkos. Appointing member to the Mental Health Substance Abuse Disorders Subcommittee, Tara Wilkos. Appointing members to the Community Initiatives Council, Deborah Bump, Heather Grasso, and Jennifer Schweitzer. Providing for a public hearing to consider public comment on the county's Community Development Block Grant Contract with the New York State Office of Community Renewal for an Economic Development Project in the Village of Geneseo. Appointing member to the Livingston County Environmental Management Council, Henry Kelsey. Adopting the Livingston County Artificial Intelligence AI Acceptable Use Policy. Declaring surplus property highways.
Is there any discussion in any of these resolutions? During none, make for a motion in a second, according to the roll call votes. Is that on the next one? Wait a second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? During none, carry the roll on, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Kaledonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted.
We have some resolutions that are going to be put through, so the roll call.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Exile Staffing Solutions LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this contract? During none, roll please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Kaledonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Bright Start Pediatric SLP and OT Services PLLC, Genesee County and New York E-Health Collaborative Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Bright Start Pediatric SLP and OT Services PLLC, Genesee County and New York E-Health Collaborative Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these contracts? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Office for the Aging, New York State Office for the Aging.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Office of Workforce Development, New York State Office of Children and Family Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there, is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing professional services contract for youth development funding, Catholic Charities St. Ben Livingston, Girl Scouts of Western New York, Legal Aid Society of Rochester, New York, Inc., the Western New York Children's Advocacy Network, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing bid and authorizing construction contract for bridge replacement project Star Road over Cotton Gully. Bid number three-three-six-one-six-eight-zero, Town of Lester, New York State DOT, pin number four-LV-zero-point-zero-six, for the Livingston County Highway Department, Twin Tier Constructors, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the implementation and supplemental agreement and funding in the first instance one hundred percent of the federal aid and state aid, Marchiselli Program aid, eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project, and appropriating funds therefore, Star Road over Cotton Gully Bridge Replacement, Town of Lester, pin number three-three-six-one-six-eight-zero, pin number four-LV-zero-point-zero-six.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing a supplemental professional services contract for the construction inspection and construction support services of a federal aid, state aid, bridge rehabilitation project, New York State DOT, pin number four-LV-zero-zero-six, Star Road over Cotton Gully Bridge Replacement, pin number three-three-six-one-six-eight-zero, Town of Lester, Popoli Design Group.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a supplemental agreement for the Livingston County Highway Department, New York State Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Planning Department, Genesee Valley Conservancy, GeoCoop, Inc., Livingston County Soil and Water Conservation District, and Village of Genesee.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these contracts? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Amending resolution number two thousand twenty-five-three-fifty-seven, Medical Motor Service of Rochester and Monroe County, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Office for the Aging, New York State Office for the Aging.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Are there any discussions on this contract? Hearing none, will please Michelle.
Gavon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Planning Department, Livonia, Evan, Lakeville Railroad Corp., and Rochester and Southern Railroad, Inc., in care of Genesee, Wyoming Railroad Services, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions on this resolution? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Friendship Cable of Texas, Inc., Doing Business as Correctional Cable TV.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following Grant Award Contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this Grant Award Contract? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Awarding Bid for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office for Enclosed Trailer Bid, Davis Traveler World LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on awarding this bid? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing a Professional Services Contract for AVI Installation at the Livingston County Sheriff's Office Training Classroom, RTS Solutions, Doing Business as Solutions, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this Professional Services Contract? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing a Professional Services Contract for GL Security Control Operating System, Securitas Technology Corporation.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County Low Region Solid Waste Management Committee, Genesee and Wyoming Counties.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this contract? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Mr. Wildsworth, amending the Two Thousand Twenty Five Livingston County Budget, County Attorney, Office for the Aging, there are five, Planning, and Sheriff's Office, there are three.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing Transfer of Funds, Office for the Aging, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Is there any discussion on any of these contracts? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Resolution authorizing the Chairman of the Lib-- of the Board to designate individuals to act on behalf of the Livingston County Four Fifty Seven B Deferred Compensation Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing Prof-- a Professional Services Contract for Legal Services, Phillips Ladle, LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Is there any discussion on this Professional Services contract?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Approving Apportionment of Mortgage Tax Receipts for the Period April First, Two Thousand Twenty Five through September Thirty, Two Thousand Twenty Five.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Approving Estimated Two Thousand Twenty Six Sales Tax Distribution.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Any, uh, any discussion on this resolution? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Providing Levy of Erroneous Taxes to be Charged to Towns.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Amending the Two Thousand Twenty Five Livingston County Salary Schedule, Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Department of Health, Department of Social Services, and Office for the Aging.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the Purchase of One Two Thousand Twenty Six Ford Transit XL for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Van Bordeaux Ford, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Is there any discussion on this purchase?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Establishing Ratios for the Year Two Thousand Twenty Five.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Is there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the Livingston County Rural Property Tax Services Director to Add Taxes on Various Two Thousand Twenty Six Town Tax Rules.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing Assessment Roll Footings Two Thousand Twenty Four. Should that be Two Thousand Twenty Five still up there?
Yeah, two was.
Two Thousand Twenty Five dash? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Any more discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing the Livingston County Rural Property Tax Services Director to Apply Corrections for Taxes on Various Two Thousand Twenty Six Town Tax Rules.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Any, uh, discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Directing the Livingston County Rural Property Tax Services Director to Spread Unpaid Water Charges and Unpaid Sewer Charges on the Two Thousand Twenty Six Tax Rules, Livingston County Water and Sewer Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Are there any, uh, concerns or questions on this resolution? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted.
So we still have the, the two public hearings open. I'll ask if there's any members of the public wishing to come forward and speak at either, either public hearing. I'll ask if there's any member of the Board of Supervisors who should, uh, speak at this time on the here public hearing. At this time, I will close the two public hearings and will continue on with, uh, the resolutions.
Mr. Demming, adopting seeker negative declaration for the Three Oh Three B additions to existing agricultural districts.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Approving Three Oh Three B additions to existing agricultural districts.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's being from Mr. Lampan.
Thank you, Mr. White. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Yeah. Are there any other questions or concerns on the board? Here you are, will please be yourself.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes Forty Five Forty Eight, Abstain One Seventy Nine, Absent Three Twenty Seven, adopted. Mr. Wildsworth, adopting budget for fiscal year Two Thousand Twenty Six.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted. Authorizing Appropriations of Two Thousand Twenty Six, adopted, adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask unanimous consent.
Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseeo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes forty-seven twenty-seven, absent three twenty-seven, adopted.
This time I'll ask Shannon, do you have any, uh, opinions from the board?
Uh, just a few, Chairman. Um, as you all know, the federal government has reopened, but what you may not know, with the reopening of the federal government came SNAP benefits, fully funded, uh, so our residents are in much better shape than they were a few weeks ago. The employee food drive is still underway. The first distribution to the pantry will happen on Monday. We intend to keep that food drive running through December with another delivery happening right before Christmas. At this time, we still do not know when the heat program is going to open. Um, they're being very careful about the date that they're going to set with that program. Uh, that being said, cold brew season is upon us. Uh, that is underway, and the warming shelter up on Murray Hill has opened as of Monday, and then again this year will be operated by Catheter Cherrys. And then lastly, relative to the proposal auction that happened back on November sixth, Amy and her team continue to work through those new requirements that come post auction, which, uh, most importantly involves tabulating the surplus amount associated with each property, and then having to file the report with the court and turning over all the surplus funds to the court for the court to manage over a period of three years. And if no one makes claim to those, uh, funds, they re-- go back to the county, um, and we're allowed to keep them at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions to come before we go to work, Mr. Razzio?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion on the history of a particular person or persons.
Thank you.
Who will you be inviting in?
I'm going to ask Shannon Distain.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeSalvo, Alvos in favor.
Hi.
Close. Mr. Carey.
I'm going to kiss his gat.
Yes, give him one.
Um, Mr. Jerry?
How you doing?
A lot of discussions today. A lot of discussions today in the regular room about the airport. He doesn't want to.
One second, I'll shut things down.